This is the first session of the Capitol City Council. And last one there is on the ad. There is a quorum present, so I'm calling the meeting to order. Item number two is our citizens' appearance. I had one question, Mr. Chel. Uh, and, uh, Mr. Darmar, would you guys want to talk at the beginning or at the end?
At the end, I mean.
All right, Mr. Darmar?
Uh, I'll talk down.
Okay. So I have a little spiel I have to read first, so we'll call you in just a second. Persons wishing to speak must sign the register and list their address. Presentations by individuals shall be limited to two minutes each. An individual's presentation may be extended by an additional two minutes with the approval of the majority of the council members present. Persons signed up to speak will be called in the order that they assigned up. No personal attacks by any speaker should be made against any member of the council, mayor, individual group, or corporation. There will be no comments or deliberations from the city council due to the Texas Open Meeting Record Act. Once the timer sounds at two minutes, the city secretary will cut in and break in and make a request of myself and the council if they would like to extend the speaker's time for an additional two minutes.
You can speak after.
Okay, just to, Jeff, you wanted to talk afterwards? All right. We have one speaker that has signed up to speak at this time, and that's, uh, Mr. John Darmar. Mr. Darmar?
Yeah, I was here originally just to talk about a brief, small extension of the Magnolia Trail on the north side of Denton Creek, and I guess I would withdraw my request to make a budgetary request to the city as the council has had the genius and foresight to approve my request before I arrived. Now we only await scheduling, uh, approval and execution. That's all I have.
Well, thank you very much. Appreciate that. Thank you for coming and speaking, and you're welcome to stay for our very exciting budget meeting tonight.
Thank you.
Item number three is Presentation Discussion Regarding the Final Budget Review. Assess valuation and tax return by Ms. Kim Tien. Kim?
Thank you, and good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, this evening, I will share with you. Change slide.
A cute picture?
Yes, because we have a little picture nowhere, just to the information. Uh, we're going to share, I'm going to share with you the certified values provided by the appraisal district last week. Uh, I'll also share the proposed tax rate, which is less than what I presented last Monday. Um, I'll provide a comparison of a 2023 tax bill versus a 2024 tax bill based on the property tax rate and the average value of a residential property with a homestead exemption. And I will end with the changes to the proposed budget since the previous two workshops. So we're going to begin on page four of your packet. And this slide is, um, what's shown on page four in your packet. Um, and both page four and this slide show the final certified valuation for the tax year 2024 compared to the certified valuation for the tax year 2023. The result is an increase of 11.31% in the total assessed value of the city. So you might recall that I used a growth rate of 7% in the estimates presented to you last Monday. And so recalling the CSO, the values, um, came in higher than what we estimated, so the tax rate that you'll see this evening is going to be lower than what you saw last Monday. Um, I am going to take a deeper dive into these assessed values, so if there's no questions right here, I'm going to move on. So this slide is, um, on the top of page five of your packet. And the slide shows the comparison of the taxable value of property, um, by category of all property, uh, in Capel in 2023 compared to 2024. The year-to-date, uh, the year-to-year comparison by category is also represented in the graph that's shown on the right. So on page five, uh, the right, the far right-hand section shows the 2024 tax year certified taxable value is a little over 11.7 billion, which again, um, is an increase of, uh, 11.31 or almost $1.2 billion over the 2023 certified values. The table shows that the combined, combined value of all commercial property in Capel is almost 23% more than 2023. Page five of your packet shows that the growth in the commercial values, uh, from 22 to 23 was almost 13%. Uh, for residential, the slide in page five shows that the change in combined values of all residential property in Capel is a little over 8%. And looking at page five in your packet, you can see that the growth in residential property was almost nine and a half percent last year. So the last change, uh, is between years for business, uh, personal property, and it's a little over 2%. Page five shows that the change in 2023 was a little over 3%. So for 2024, the breakout between commercial combined with business personal property versus residential is 47% versus 53%. Uh, this does represent a slight change from the previous years. In 21, uh, 2022 and 2023, the breakout was 45% commercial, business personal property, and 55% residential. Uh, I did mention last Monday, um, that I thought it would stay there. Um, I think, and it did not, and I think, uh, the larger increase in commercial is because commercial property values are not capped, whereas residential property values are capped at 10% growth. Now, there are some non-homestead properties as well as commercial properties that are capped at 20%. Um, those would be properties that are valued, um, less than $5 million.
Kim, can you put your crystal ball into effect and kind of pontificate on what that 10% cap could do to us long-term?
Um, well, the 10%, so I, I would take it back to before there was a cap. So prior to SB2, um, you know, ta, the tax rate could grow 8% without voter approval. And there were also no limits on value increases. And so back then, because the tax rate, it was, uh, the tax rate, it was only the tax rate that was limited by 8% and values could increase, revenues could go up exponentially, um, for cities. Now with SB2, they limit not the tax rate, but they limit revenue growth. So that's a, that calc, that in turn calculates into a different tax bill or a different impact on a tax bill. It, it reduces the impact on a tax bill because not only are they, uh, capping, the growth is limited to 10%, but they're capping your revenues, our revenues. So a tax rate, um, can't grow a, as, as it did in the past. Is that?
Yeah, it does. I, I, what prompted my question was going back a few years, that 53, 47% was significantly different, and I'm surprised to see it equalizing out so quickly. And that was, and that was kind of what spurred my question.
So, you know, it used to be, um, let's see if I have here, it used to be, like, in the early 90s, it was 80-20, with 80% being residential and 20% being commercial. So I, in my opinion, the city council has done a really good job in developing the city to kind of, um, spread that out between commercial and residential so that the residents aren't supporting, you know, every piece of the, the city.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, on the agricultural, is that just the same amount of property they just jacked up that high, or did we actually add agricultural into the roll?
We did not add, and so we're, we're double-checking that number within.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so next, I'm going to, uh, dive a little bit deeper into the appraised value. And so this next slide is from the bottom section of page five in your packet. Uh, this section shows the breakout between new construction and reappraisals. The last column on page five provides the growth breakdown for 2024 tax year. Uh, the first section is the new construction, and it makes up about 41 million or about 3.5% of the increase in value. In 2023, new construction made up almost 81 million or 9% of the increase in value. Uh, page five shows a breakup of the value from new construction between commercial, residential, business personal property. It's also shown on the slide. Commercial makes up about 31 million or almost 3% of the total increase in value. Uh, the growth from residential new construction accounts for almost 10% or 10 million or less than 1% of the growth from new construction. New construction, um, which is excluded from the new revenue calculation, represents about $162,000 of the proposed fiscal year '25 maintenance and operations property tax revenue. The next section, um, under the growth breakdown on page five and on the slide is reappraisals. Reappraisals are initiated by the appraisal district, and reappraisals make up about 1.1 billion or about 93.5% of the increase in value. Uh, commercial reappraisal, appraisals makes up about 648 million or 54.5% of the increase in growth, uh, from reappraisals, and then residence, residential makes up almost 464 million or 39% of the growth from reappraisals. Uh, and then the last category, the growth in value from business personal property is about 35 million and represents less than 3% of the increase in value.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. Kim, um, the residential reappraisal, I'm seeing 463 million, and that's compared to 488 million from previous year?
Correct. That's correct.
So is this telling me that the residential property values actually have gone down from 488 to 463?
It's the reappraisal process.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Can you repeat that again?
Uh, no, I'm, actually, my, I had misunderstood it, so this is the reappraisal process.
Address me, please. Thank you. Um, Kim, I did have a question on the, uh, the residential didn't increase as much as it did in the previous years. Is that due to the, to that 10% cap?
I, I would, I, I have no idea. I'm guessing, um, because it did last year. You know, looking at 2022, residential increased 9.4. Last year it increased 9.5, and this year it's only 8.1.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, no further questions, and we're going to move on. So this slide shows a breakout of the total tax rate and the levy. Uh, this is page six of your packet. Um, and page six and this slide show the tax rate used to prepare the budget, which is highlighted in the bright blue. The proposed tax rate is .462222. The current tax rate is .491818. The proposed tax rate is 6% less than the current tax rate. The proposed MNO tax rate is 3.499% greater than the fiscal year '24 adopted MNO property tax rate, or property tax revenue, I'm sorry. It's revenue. The proposed MNO tax rate is 3.499 greater than the fiscal year '24 adopted MNO property tax revenue. That increase is less than the increase in the CPI of 5.34%, which is calculated between January of 2023 and January of 2024. Are there any questions on page six or this slide?
Acronym, CTI?
Consumer Price Index.
Thank you. CPI. Yes. I heard CTI, and I was like...
Sorry. Can I?
Uh, Brianna?
Yeah, um, I wrote this down because I just need you to repeat that for me. The 3.499% increase is, is what?
It is the change between the, uh, MNO portion of the tax rate, the 45 million, and what the MNO tax rate was la, or tax revenue was.
Was last year.
Yeah, so the MNO revenue this year versus last year.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Kim?
So next, we're going to look at tax bills. So these next two slides are not in your packet. The first slide was presented last Monday and has been updated to reflect the averaged assessed value based on the certified values for a property receiving the homestead exemption. In addition, the tax rate, uh, is reflecting the proposed tax rate calculated using the certified values. The amount circled in red at the bottom shows the change in the tax bill of a residential property receiving a homestead exemption. So based on the average home value of a residential property with a homestead exemption, the city's portion of the property tax bill will increase $75 for the year or $6 per month. This represents an increase of about 3%. So although the average assessed value increased almost 10%, the decrease in the tax rate of 6% reduces the increase in the tax bill to only 3%. And this really is an example of the impact of SB2, and it demonstrates the CSO effect. So the next one is, um, again, we, this was shown to you last Monday, and it's been updated to, again, reflect the assessed values based on the certified values of property receiving the homestead exemption, and it reflects the average taxable value, um, after applying both the homestead exemption and the over 65. Again, the proposed tax rate is used to calculate the average tax bill for a property receiving both these exemptions, and you'll notice that the average tax bill for a property receiving both the homestead and over 65 will increase almost $105 or $8.75 per month. The tax bill for a property with both of these exemptions will continue to be less than a tax bill for a property with only a homestead exemption. So based on the assessed values, the tax bill with both the homestead and over 65 exemption will be about $462 less than a tax bill that only receives a homestead exemption. Now, we did, this time, we used the average, um, uh, the average value of a home ba, based on just receiving a homestead exemption, but historically, we know that a, uh, over 60, home receiving an over 65, that home value has been less. We just didn't have that home value to present to you tonight. So we used, um, the home, that, the average home value with a homestead exemption. So are there any questions on these two slides?
Kevin?
Kim? Um, again, just, uh, I know we have a lot of people here tonight, so, um, I just want to make sure that, that everybody understands. So I, I'm sure there's some probably questions in the audience about, uh, why would a, the bill be increased more, uh, for a senior versus a, someone who does not take the senior exemption? Could you walk us through that really fast, just so everybody understands?
Sure. So, um, if you notice, uh, the, the homestead exemption is a percentage, so a percentage of a higher number is a higher number. However, the hu, when you, the over 65 is 100,000, it's a flat number. So that doesn't have the same impact as it does on a lower value, right? So $100,000 as a percentage of, 515 is a greater percentage than $100,000 on 565,000. Does that, does that help you?
And just to be clear, the previous slide, you saw in F-year 2025, average residential tax bill was $2,483.66, but on a senior, uh, that would be $2,021.44. So the overall bill is actually lower, correct?
That's correct, and I would anticipate it to be even lower if we were using an average, uh, property value of someone who receives the over 65, because we know that historically, um, those values have been less.
Thank you for that clarification, Kim. I really appreciate it.
Are there any other questions on these two slides? Then the last, um, the last area I would like to share with you are the changes that have been made since the previous budget workshops. Um, first is debt service. The ad valorem tax shown on page seven in your packet.
This is item B on the agenda.
Well...
It's the continuation.
It's the continuation. Yeah. Okay. And so this is looking at page seven. So it's page seven, the ad valorem tax for debt service is now based on certified values and the tax rate calculated using, um, the tax rate calculation form for the INS portion of the tax rate. The amount of fund, fund balance used to hold the INS tax rate flat changed from $559,675 to $241,859. Those are the only changes to the debt service. Next is the general fund, and it has a few changes, so beginning on page 12 of your packet, you will find that the ad valorem revenue has increased $67 from what was shown last Monday. And so like the debt service, the MNO, um, the maintenance and operations ad valorem revenue is based on certified values and the tax rate calculation form. Um, total revenues on page 13 also increased $67, and that's just the amount carrying it down. Uh, expenditures of the general fund increased $6,000 based on council's direction to increase the Special Olympics grant by $5,000 and the贷by neighbor grant by 1,000, and this is reflected in the mayor and council line shown on page 15 of your packet. This change, um, also increased the total expenditure shown on page 16 by $6,000. The fund balance of the general fund has been updated to reflect the $67 increase in the fiscal year '25 proposed revenue and the $6,000 increase in proposed expenditures. So for water sewer, um, well, there's one more. So we also, your fund balance walk forward that is on, um, page 11. We did add a line called property tax reduction lawsuits after certified values. Um, in discussions with the appraisal district, they are, um, seeing an increase in lawsuits that are challenging the, their, um, assessed values. They told us that a couple of years ago, the lawsuits pending were about 2,000. Those lawsuits have increased to, um, around 4,000. Um, and so since we can't predict the outcome of lawsuits, we can't predict, um, the impacts that it'll have on the property, uh, tax revenues, we have set this aside as another type of revenue threat.
And which lot, which item on that, on the, on page 11 was that?
So, um, on page 11, it is the one that is labeled, uh, property tax reduction lawsuits after certified values. Toward the, it's toward the bottom, right before unassigned.
Got it. Okay, I think Ramesh had a question.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Kim, back on page 16, the, the general fund. Uh, again, for the benefit of audience, uh, my, my interpretation is, eh, this is showing that we are spending $5 million more, uh, in the next fiscal year compared to this year, correct?
Um, approximately, yes, you are correct.
So our total spend is going to be 74,503,640.
Correct.
Thank you, Kim.
You're welcome. Uh, moving on for, uh, water sewer, the, uh...
Kevin?
Uh, Kim?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Quick question. And I, I apologize if I missed this. That five mi, that $5 million that's in that, uh, line item under assigned fund balance, um, where did, was that in, uh, unreserved, undesignated, or was that somewhere else? And I apologize if I missed that.
It would have been in strategic reserve.
Strategic reserve, got, okay. Just shifted $5 million out of that line?
Correct.
Okay, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Kim, uh, curious, so the $5 million, that is basically revenue replacement in case value don't get adjusted down. Is that the way that would get utilized?
So what happens is the, you know, we received certified values last week. Um, that's a point in time. People file lawsuits that certified value gets adjusted.
Yep.
Um, and so it could end up that we, we budget that we're going to receive a certain amount in property tax revenue. Certified values change because people win their lawsuit, so then in effect, the amount of property tax revenue we receive end up, ends up being less.
Right, okay. And that, that would, that's what that $5 million, we just utilize that if needed?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
And to be clear, are they, they're, the lawsuit would be against the appraisal district?
So the lawsuit isn't really against the appraisal district, they're challenging their values.
Okay.
So...
Who, if I'm asking too weedy of a question for, for that, I mean, who do they sue for that, because it's not us?
Um, so, I'm not sure that they're suing as much as...
It's a protest.
It's a protest.
Okay, that's a better word.
It's a judicial review of their assessed value.
Okay.
Um, established by the appraisal district.
Excellent, okay, thank you.
It's similar to if you protest your, your values, only some take it to court if they don't like the outcome.
So you have the option when you protest your values to take it to court?
You can.
That's what they're doing?
Yes.
It's the next step of what most of us go through?
But just making sure that we're not saying publicly that people are suing the city to...
Okay, yes, no.
Just, that's, that's all I'm establishing here.
Thank you, okay.
So, Kim, I know you were in extensive and lengthy discussions with the appraisal district this past week. What percentage of those, um, protest are commercial versus residential?
Um, I, I do not know the exact, um, but looking through, uh, the list, the majority were commercial.
Thank you.
Moving on, um, to water sewer. Uh, the cost of water sewer, and this is going to be, um, on, sorry, uh, page 22 in your packet. So the cost of the water division has been updated to reflect the rate increases from Dallas Water Utilities. The volume rate increased 10%. So Dallas Water Utilities was charging us, uh, .05150. Uh, they have increased that to .05663, and that's for the volume portion of their rate, and that's for 1,000 gallons of water that we pull from them. The demand rate is increasing 8.7%, so it's going from $328,362 per million gallons of demand to $356,978 per million gallons of demand. And that is something that we pay no matter how many gallons we pull, whether we pull one gallon or we pay, pull 18 and a half million gallons or 19 and a half million gallons. So the budget, um, for the demand portion, um, of the cost of the water increased from about $6.4 million to almost $7 million. Um, and the impact on the cost of water budget based on the new rates was an increase from $8.1 million shown to you on July 15th to almost $8.9 million, um, shown to you this evening on page 22. Uh, in addition, the two divisions with staffing, so utility operations and utility billing have been adjusted to count, uh, to account for the finalized salary and benefit information, and that totals, um, approximately $25,000. We did not have all of the salary, uh, information from the compensation study when we presented to you on July 15th and July 22nd. Which leads me to the special revenue funds. Um, those funds with staffing have been adjusted again to account for the finalized salary and benefits information. Um, so the total of all special revenue funds with employees, um, just all of them, was adjusted by $21,548. The hotel occupancy tax fund expenditures decreased $80,000 because the historical museum reduced its request from 130,000 to 50,000. And then as directed by council, the crime control and prevention district budget was updated to reflect the removal of the salary reimbursement from the school district for the school resource officers. And so those were the only changes from what you have seen on July 15th and July 22nd, and that really concludes my presentation for this evening, and I'm happy to answer
Give us a second. So I'll break the ice. I think I heard you wrong. But when you were describing the removal of the school resource officer, could you go, uh, officers, could you go over that again? I think I heard that backwards.
Oh, okay, so what we did is, uh, historically, the school district would reimburse us for a portion of the salaries we pay.
So you removed...
We removed that. So we will not be asking the school district to do that.
I heard you remove the cost, okay, nevermind.
Okay. I heard that too.
Thank you. The revenue. Got it.
Yes, okay. They will not, I'm sorry, just for clarification, they will not be reimbursing us for that.
Correct.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
At your, at your request.
Yes, agreed, yes.
Kevin? And to be clear, uh...
Well, they...
Well, they requested it too.
The school district is aware that that's going to be a case, or year to year?
I've had conversations with the superintendent of this.
Excellent, thank you, sir.
Jim?
So, okay, I mean, I understand the CSO and all that stuff. So, but the higher valuations that have come in, setting aside the appeals and the lawsuits and all like that, and the fact there's going to be some true-up based upon actual results going forward on the valuation side, we'll set that aside for now. What amount of money would it take to get the residential and commercial taxpayers to the same amount of tax payment as last year at a lower rate?
So then a new revenue rate, is that what you're requesting?
Hmm, if we wanted to buy down the taxes to get to a point where there was no effective tax increase, to get to where it was last year's rate on the higher valuation, what's that delta?
Well, for each penny on the tax rate, it's about one million, one hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
So how many pennies would that be?
If you, well, it's the difference.
Because there was like a one point.
Difference between the two revenue, the difference between the MNO tax, so are you talking MNO tax rate and?
Yes, I'm talking MNO, sorry, not INS.
Are you just talking MNO, not INS? So not the full tax rate, just the MNO portion of the tax rate?
Yes.
So the increase in that revenue is a million, five hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Okay, that's what I thought, that's the delta. So, I mean, given how things are pretty tough around the kitchen table these days, I would propose that we use part of our sales tax surplus to pay that down, to get the taxpayers where they're not actually paying any more in tax at all for the next year, with the hope that next year will be a better year financially and that we could just flatten the tax burden for all of our people for this one year. We've got, we've been setting aside, you know, all the sales tax that we've been collecting under the old regime, but budgeting at the new regime.
Just a procedural, you're really need to be talking to us, not to Kim. She's not going to be making that decision.
Fair enough, you bet. So, yeah, that's, that's what I would propose we do, just to flatten it out for everybody, seniors and non seniors alike. If it's a one point five by million dollar delta, we've certainly got that built up in excess sales tax revenue. We don't have any new cores or art centers or anything to build, so I think we do want to favor if we could just flatten their tax, their tax burden by using some of the excess, I mean, because, look, I went on council at the time, but it was brilliant that the budget was immediately cut to accommodate what we projected the collections would be on sales tax under three point three three four. We've adhered to that lower budget, even though, and I could've warned you guys about this, litigation's dragged on interminably, which litigation does from time to time. And even though now I feel a little bit more confident about our prospects than I did a few years ago in the litigation itself, I, we've accumulated enough sales tax where we can pay that one point five five million dollar delta out of the sales tax excess and flatten the actual tax payment, what people are really getting out of pocket to. So that's what I would propose.
Don?
Well, I'll piggyback on what Jim's talking about, but I want to start by saying, I want to focus on the budget first, what's been proposed for the budget. I actually am supportive of the budget that has been proposed as it ha, as it has. There's about a five and a half million dollar, or five point three million dollar increase in the general fund budget, but five point six of it is going to be for salaries. And I think, I think I've been given this app, about fifty-seven percent of that is going to be for police and fire, so directly to public safety. So I'm very supportive. Being a world-class city starts with having great people that are here and making sure that people are being paid appropriately. In the top third is what we always focus on, very supportive of the budget as proposed. To Jim's point, the additional property tax levy that we're talking about is about a million and a half dollars. And I'm with Jim in proposing that we find another way to fund that million and a half for this year. We have accumulated, because staff has done such a great job over the last three or four years, making sure we're ready to land this plane as soon as Austin figures out what they're going to do on the sales tax, we have accumulated substantial additional unbudgeted revenue from sales tax over the years. To the, to the tune of, it depends on how you count it, but fund balance has gone up in the general fund by seventy or eighty million dollars in the last three or four years. So I think we can, on this, you know, year-to-year basis, go with this no new revenue tax rate, which keeps our tax revenue flat from property taxes levy. And we fund that from fund balance, just like what we're doing. Move some of that strategic reserve is what I would even say, is just earmark a million and a half of that to fill this gap for this year. Now saying that, I do think we have to all be cognizant that in the future, depending on what happens with the sales tax, that may mean we have to come back in used, unused increments and go above three and a half percent increase if, if they flatten us on this sales tax thing. But that has not happened up to this point, and we have accumulated substantial resources in the interim. And so I think this is, it's a, I don't think, we have done a great job planning for all this. However, I don't think that citizens' property tax have to indefinitely be burdened by an uncertain situation coming out of Austin, that's fabricated out of Austin to begin with. If it wasn't for what they're trying to do down there, it wouldn't even be an issue. So I don't know, there's no end in sight of this uncertainty. I don't think that we, we have to just endlessly plan at the taxpayer's expense for this.
If I could just supplement that real quick?
Hang on.
Okay.
Got it, Kevin and then Brianna and then Jim.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mike and Kim, this question is kind of directed at you guys based on this conversation. If we were to, you, let's say, Don proposed using strategic reserve, for example, for the funding source for that, would that impact our, our triple A credit rating? Would that, would that, would that, would you see any negative of using that strategic reserve and making sure that our credit rating is still safe and secure?
Well, okay, I'm not Moody's and I'm not Standard and Poor's. What we told, all of you told, Standard and Poor's and Moody's is we would not use that for maintenance and operations. So this is what you told them, this is what you potentially are going to do, which is your priority to do that. What that impact is, I can't tell you because I don't know. But you've gone on record saying what you're not going to do, and you're getting ready to potentially do it.
This is why we ask the questions out loud.
The other side of, just to be real clear, the other side is this is a compounding issue. Again, if you choose to do this, the one point five million dollars, knowing that you potentially have an increment, but not necessarily knowing how that's going to actually work, is that you have the potential now if you've eliminated one point five million dollars of revenue from your property tax.
Can I interject? The unused increment right now, we calculated it out and the appraisal district did too, it's only worth two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars.
Yeah.
That's currently, and it rolls off.
And that's also counting on that you're actually then increasing the tax.
And, and Kim and Mike, just, just so everybody understands, so the unused increment that you're talking about, that is, is SB two lingo that we're discussing because we're capped at the three point four nine nine increase, so we have.
On the revenue.
On, on the, on the revenue on the MNO side.
Correct.
So just so everybody in the room understands, so we basically have two hundred, how much two hundred and what?
So we have, so I'm going to explain.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm going to walk through it.
Thank you, ma'am.
So we have two hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-five dollars. Of that, two hundred and thirty thousand, four hundred and forty-one is from fiscal year twenty-one, three hundred and eighty-four dollars is from twenty-two, and four hundred and twenty dollars is for twenty-three, and it rolls off. So that large two hundred and thirty thousand, we will lose next year. It, it won't be there because like you carry three years. And so that, that's the furthest one away, that was twenty-one, so it will be gone and you'll have twenty-two, twenty-three, and then whatever you do for this year.
So technically, we could go slightly above three point four nine nine to recapture some of that this year if we.
Yes.
So, just so everybody kind of understands what that.
But that translates through the property tax rate.
Yes, it translates through the, through the MNO portion of the property tax rate.
Brianna?
And that was actually, my question was the pros, the cons, and what had we said we were not going to use the funds for, so you just answer my questions.
Okay, well, so on that, on the increase, I wanted to point out, I think fifty-seven percent of it is for police and fire, so, and, you know, I'm a big believer in making sure that we're able to not only attract, as we have, but to retain, you know, the top-rate police and fire. And we have that, and we're, I think, very close to finally being fully staffed in the police department. So I certainly support that. And, you know, while it's, it may be true, what we, what we said at the same time, we had three different underwriters bidding to issue our bonds. We were talking about, kidding about whether there was a quadruple A rating at the time. I, with the ten percent that the charter requires that we effectively set aside every year, which we have been religiously doing, I, I think we're in ample shape for any bond underwriters going forward. I, my personal view is it won't affect our, our underwriting or our bond rating, particularly given the amount. It seems like a lot to me, but in the grand scheme of things, one point five five million dollars is not going to affect our triple A rating in my opinion.
Don?
Going back, because I do appreciate Mike's comment about the not using fund balance for MNO, because I'm one hundred percent in a, in an agreement with that concept. We are foregoing an increase that we could take this year under law, which would equal that one and a half. So, you know, I know it's all semantics, but we are, we could have increased, or we could increase the tax rate to get that extra one and a half million. So it's not like we're tapped out and therefore having to dig in fund balance.
No, 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 no. Their increment would be two hundred and thirty.
No, no, I'm saying, just from a visual standpoint, if we went with no new revenue.
Okay, you're talking about that number, okay.
If we were, did no new, if we did that number.
Right.
The fact is, we could have gone and taken the voter approval rate and got the a million and a half is what I'm saying. So it's not like we're being tapped out. Like, we're not using fund balance for operations because we have no other options, is what I'm saying. We could have increased the tax rate to the voter approval rate.
My understanding is we did.
So.
My understanding is we did increase it by three one four, four four nine.
What is, I know, but that's, I'm proposing we don't do that.
Then I would be presenting a budget where revenues are less than expenditures, just.
Right. Like we, we would be just transferring. Here's, here's the other piece that I know we can't budget this way, and I one hundred percent agree with that we can't budget this way, but we are going to be, we will end up collecting additional sales tax. I mean, we're doing it right now, we're going to, we're going to net what, four and a half million dollars in the general fund this year, at least from the amended budget, as it is already for this year. And we started out flat on our proposed budget, and we're going to be at four and a half million, so.
Hey, can I, can I, if three point, so I'm going to make this statement, if three point three three four were not in place, the no new revenue rate is a very tangible tax rate for the city of Cappella.
Sure.
Because of our sales tax. So the combination of SB two, three three four, right, it's that combination that y'all have taken into account previously, right? So if tonight we say this is what you'd like us to do, that's perfectly fine, just understand the implications of that, that's all I'm asking.
Sure.
And that, you know, to Jim's point on the lawsuit, it's, it's fifty-fifty at best, let's just say that, in terms of.
That's all it ever is.
Right, fifty-fifty at best. And again, we have a whole legislative session to go through. So we have unknowns. And for us, so as the bean counters and everything along those lines, we don't operate real well in the unknowns. And so that's based on your direction that we received back in January, that we presented the budget this way. If you move in this particular direction, it's just, now you've started changing the dynamic, again, y'all will get to do that, that's what you're there for. Just, again, I will always say, just understand the implications down the road.
Understand the unintended consequences of having that lower rate set now that we're going to have to live with for the future because of SB two.
I appreciate all of that. I am struggling with the fact is, because we have been planning and we have, we have continued to increase at the three, at the lawful three and a half percent rate, right? I mean, that's what we built into the budget. But we have accumulated a lot of additional tax revenue that we purposely did not budget for, and I can't give the property tax back to the person after I've let it. That's what I'm struggling with. And we've done it for three or four years.
No, that's, that's an accurate statement. The buildup is all strictly sales tax.
Right, right, right. And that's, so I completely appreciate everything about planning for the future and the uncertainty, but at the same time, I have this other struggle with, but how much do we continue to?
And let me say this, if you, just to say you go down this path, it's probably fine. On our five-year forecast, we will adjust to go, and we will take out three point four nine as the equivalent, and we will give a five-year forecast that's based on no new revenue, right? Done. So that's, all it does is just start moving some things kind of a little bit further down the road. Doesn't mean they go away.
And I would propose that that is a conversation, because usually what we do is to retreat, right?
Right.
Is when we would have those conversations, and that's what I would propose, because I'm not necessarily proposing we just change direction forever like this, but for this year, just based on what we have, I'm, I'm talking about this budget.
I just wanted to be real clear, once you set this direction, we don't get that back unless the council is willing to increase the tax rate at some point in the future.
And that's what I was mentioning, that is one of the repercussions, is we potentially would have, might have to go more than the three and a half percent sometime in the future to catch back up.
Potentially.
Right, potentially.
Keep in mind, when SB two was, was put in place, the cost of living, the consumer price index was less than a, were running around a percent. So three and a half sounded like a big number. We can see over the past two to three years that that is not a big number. It's been actually half of what the CPI was running back in twenty-two or twenty, twenty-one or twenty-two. So, you know, I've been a big proponent of looking forward to the future, well, let's just keep that future in mind when you start making decisions.
Agreed.
They're going to impact the long-term future of the city.
Agreed. And in fact, all the buildup in additional resources, I do want to point out, we have been able to fully fund capital replacement funds, as well as now this infrastructure that we're moving over this year, so we have.
Oh, no, y'all, y'all done a great job of preparing us for this, it's, it's.
Well, it's not even us, it's, it's staff. I mean, I, I, I don't take anything away from.
Well, appreciate it.
The planning that has been and ratcheting down when we heard this was happening.
But you didn't have to do those things either, right? I guess, that's my.
But, well, I said, I said my piece. Y'all can, y'all can discuss. But that's, that's where I am for this, for this million and a half dollar gap that I'm talking about.
So just for, for, because I have a responsibility, we have a responsibility by this, probably next Tuesday, I guess, is it, by Monday? We had to submit the budget, which is then your budget. So before we leave tonight, it's the thumbs up, not that you're voting, it's the thumbs up, thumbs down, I just need to know what is the, it is no new.
He's going to need to know what budget you need to see next week.
And I need to know the maximum tax rate to publish.
Right, that's the other thing that y'all talk about.
So I ask for anybody else's input who has, who cares this week?
EJ?
I think I have a question for the, from the budget.
Okay.
I asked this question last week, it's on page sixteen, we have seventy-four million for the general fund. And on page thirty-seven on IMF, it's eight point four million. On page thirty-nine, it's crime is five point seven million. Page thirty, CRDC is about five point eight, and page twenty-three is hot tax of seven ninety-three, six six zero. So when I add all that up, it's about ninety-five million. And on page eleven, it says budgeted expenditure is about one oh five, so I'm trying to understand that ten million dollar delta.
Okay, so page eleven is only general fund, and you added up a bunch of funds?
Yeah.
Right, but page eleven is just the general fund?
No, no, page eleven, budgeted expenditure for FY twenty-five.
And if you look at the title, Walk Forward of Fund Balance, General Fund.
It's only general.
It's only general fund.
Okay.
And we, we sent council the spreadsheet, the packet Tracy sent out that had every fund listed revenues, expenditures, transfers, and then it had a total at the end.
Okay, I missed that, what was that amount? What was that amount?
Yeah.
Is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay. Let me see. An email.
Oh, it's a small print.
So it was a total of 100, are you wanting to know total expenditures for the city as a whole? 142 million?
No, 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 that's including the water and sewer. Exclude that.
Exclude water and sewer?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Water and sewer is 20, so 122 million? 122 million?
So that's the total expenditure.
All, yeah, all special revenue funds included?
Yeah.
Except water and sewer?
122.
Kim, we got it, it's fine.
You got it?
Okay, let's, thank you.
Ramesh?
Thank you, Mayor. I, I really like the intent behind what Jim was trying to say, that if we can get to a budget where there's no incremental property tax, so folks will pay the same that they paid last year, and if there's any reverse math that we could do to get to that, that would be my preference, or my mind.
Those are more likely to sound...
Just real quick, Kim, I think what's gonna happen, let's say that they do this tonight, we're gonna have to do a calculation, because it's not the new, no-new revenue rate, I hate saying that. It's actually a little bit lower, if you recall, because of the debt services taken out. So tonight, what I would say, if y'all thumbs up something, and whether you use the 3.499 for advertising purposes, or you're gonna say, no, we're gonna use the no-new revenue rate, the rate that she has in there, that would be the number. I just want to prepare you, the number may look a little, there may be a shading of that number, just because of the way the calculation works.
Because the property values went up, the rate, the new calculated rate would be lower than you on the NNR, is what it's...
It's possible, because of some calculations, and then we just, I'm just saying, we're gonna have to do some work on that, which is, that's fine.
And for my understanding, Mayor, if we do make that move, I think I'm hearing you say that, in the future years, if we needed to cover our expenses, we may actually have to go above the voter approval rate of 3.499, which means we'll have to go to an election.
Not necessarily, because that's what Kevin was talking about, you have the unused increment.
Unused increment from this year.
No, well, just remember, it's a three-year average, it then drops. And so if you don't use $1.5 million this year, that's the 24 number. Does that make sense?
Yes, that makes sense. So, so we do, we do have that buffer that we could use in the future.
Well, except to Kim's point, that buffer rolls off, and the majority of it is rolling off next year, so it's gonna be a rather, it's gonna be rather small.
True, true, Mayor, the $230,000 from 2021 rolls off.
Right.
But this year, if we decided to go with a lower rate, we would potentially have over $1.5 million that we could use in the future years.
For, for three years.
Three years, three years.
Yes.
But the $230,000 will roll off, so you'll have a little over $700.
So, you know, I mean, and to Mike's point, I mean, the, the biggest problem, all this, just the timing that SB 2 provides us, because, you know, Kim and her team didn't even get the assessed values until Thursday. So to try to run all this through, it really is almost unreal expectations. So I really appreciate that, I know y'all have been putting in 20-hour days, I really appreciate it. But, I mean, I, I'm thumbs up on this, just because I think it means enough to the folks. Looking at all this inflation, anything else, anything that we can do, I think is gonna be a help.
Anybody have any...
Don?
Do we, are we, are you gonna present something on the maximum tax rate? Do we have to, or do we need to discuss that now?
So we have to post the maximum tax rate, and, and then on the 13th, you hold a public hearing, or you vote on the maximum tax rate. So we, we post in the paper that you will be holding a public hearing and a vote on the maximum tax rate on the 13th. It's not passing it, it's just telling us the maximum tax rate that we can advertise for you to consider on the 27th.
Okay, so we need to give y'all directions tonight.
And that number would be the 46222?
That, that would be the number right now, that's the, the .462222 is the...
Is the no-new revenue rate?
No, that's the bar?
No, that, that's the, that's the 3.499%.
Okay, I just want to make sure they're all saying the right thing.
What I provided to you tonight is the .46222, and that is based on an increase of 3.499, which is slightly lower than the voter approved, but higher than the no-new revenue.
And I guess, I would propose that we, that's what we, at this point, we use that as the maximum tax rate.
The .4622.
Because we haven't run all the calculations on no-new revenue tax rate, and just to make sure.
Okay, thank you for... So the, you will publish the, the 46222 as a maximum rate that we would be able to authorize?
Consider, correct.
So the question before the council then is, do you want to see as a budget item, a, I'm not even sure what to call it, it's, it's basically a modified no-new revenue rate? Is that what you would like to see Kim prepare for consideration before the council? Got one thumbs up. Don, I think that was, you wrote thumbs up.
I don't know where I stood.
Well, you were, you were saying...
I don't know where I stood. Yes, I'm in favor, no-new revenue tax rate.
Okay, I think we've got four.
Just for clarification, sorry.
Brianna?
So, okay, maybe the question's for you. So, quick question, so would we say yes, that's what we're looking for, which I hear you, the, the posted rate would, max rate would be the .4622? We would then want numbers rerun for no-new revenue increase rate? Timing-wise, how does all that work?
Well, it means that she'd have to have it ready for us by August the 13th.
So we will file the budget based on the .46222, which we have prepared on August 5th, and then on the 13th, you guys can tell us what you want, and we can adjust the budget so that we have a proper budget for the 27th.
Between now and then, we will calculate your request of the no-new revenue rate impact, which just on its surface, if you look at page 12, using what Kim talked about, the ad valorem current would reduce basically that 1.1 million to 1.5 million on the FY '25 budget proposed, right? So that's where you're gonna see, we will get you that information prior to the 13th, so it's not the first time that you've seen it, and so that you can evaluate, is that what you really want to do? And you have that ability to make that happen, and you'll know what the impact is.
Okay, so then just to add that on the comment, we are, so I'm, I guess all that to say is I'm thumbs up, I'd like to see it. We're not necessarily agreeing to it, it gives us the opportunity to kind of look at our options.
We're not voting on anything.
Right, and then we can figure out what happens going forward, okay?
Whatever you want to say.
Yes.
But as I understand it, we, we can publish the, the maximum tax rate we've already calculated, because that doesn't change, and we're not gonna get close to that anyways, right?
You're not voting to approve it?
Right.
And that just gives you the freedom to have the discussion, and to have a tax rate that goes up to that, but no higher. Okay.
Mark?
My concern is of a downgrade. What does that cost us in the long run if we did get knocked down a notch? I mean, it, I think it would be substantially more money expended than that 1.5.
It would do more than that. It would limit your ability to fund future projects, because you couldn't incur the additional debt in a timely fashion. And I think that was kind of what Mike was alluding to, that, you know, there are, and I, I called them unintended consequences, well, they're, they're unintended, but there are consequences to the, to that decision. I don't know that, I don't even know that the best accountants could put a number to that, Mark. It's, it could be depending, I'll tell you what, depending on the rate of inflation, it could be extremely large. If we went back into a very small rate of inflation like we've had for 10 years, maybe not so much. But it just kind of depends on what you see for the outlook. That's why, as Mike said, they, they're very conservative, and they don't like the uncertainty, so they tend to, to budget toward the, the safest route possible.
And I'll give you an example, we had this discussion this week, y'all had asked about the interest rate, right? So in interest, you had two, I think you specifically got the same question, 2.5, well, I'm on a risk pool board, you have a risk pool board, they use 3%. So, you know, and it's, right now, we're pulling 5, so it's just, it's just being prudent, you know? And I understand there's another side of that, right? In terms of what the, what the impact is. But you don't get to go make it up, you know?
Now, just, I just want to...
I'm glad to contribute.
That, I mean, we did tell the rating agencies that we had a plan, that, and we were working the plan, and that plan was around the rule change, right? And that we, we were working this plan, that if the rule changes, you know, we were being very strategic in what we were doing. And that was one of the things that they really were impressed with, is that we were ahead of it and being very proactive.
And I'm, and look, we can, we can work the story, that's particularly fine, because the increment is in place, and the council has that option to be able to do that, so that for future M&amp;O. I mean, there's a way for us to tell the story. I'm not, it's, it's, if you get into a repetition of every year doing this, then I think you are raising red flags. And then also, just to be clear, we don't anticipate any additional debt over the next several years being issued, so it's not, they do evaluate us every fall, I guess, right? And so they'll ask if there's any changes or anything along those lines, and, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll address it for you, but, so, you do have tremendous flexibility, that's the position that you're in. So if this is how you'd like to use it, that's fine.
Kevin?
Well, I love paying lower taxes, don't get me wrong, I want to make sure I throw that out there. I 100% respect, Mark, you're thinking along the same lines I am, just about what that does to our, our rating. I'm struggling with the idea of, with us currently being in litigation, you know, with the 3.334, I'm, I'm, I'm struggling with, with what this does to the plan that we are working. I'm not, I'm not a, I guess my, my ask would be, like, is there any way that, like, yes, you know, I want to make sure I say this right, like, so how much was it, almost 60% of the, of the increase was police adjustment?
57%.
57%.
Police and fire.
So, I guess what I'm asking is, is like, you know, we have, we have a projected $24 million ending balance, you know, for that, could we dig into the crime, you know, the crime control district and supplement that, so we're not digging as much into the fund balance? Or does it matter, like, we take a dollar out of fund balance, and we set, you know what I'm saying, like, is it, is it the semantics of the work, or can we go in and find alternatives?
Yeah, so, what, how many years ago was it? Just two years ago, we moved how many out of police in the crime control district over to general fund? Just, just to, because the crime control district wasn't gonna be able to support.
Exactly.
So now, now we've taken on additional SROs and reduced our revenue from the school district, yet the answer is yes, you can use that to transfer over to play, pay, it's hard to say words, pay for public safety, police services, right? You can, that's what it's there for.
Yes.
You can do that.
So, yeah, I guess, I mean, but I, I have no, because I know you don't work for, for standards and poor moody's, but like, is it, is it y'all's interpretation that we take a, you know, basically take a dollar out of fund balance, and at that point, we're going against our word, and what we said, this is our plan?
Oh, no, let me say this, not knowing what y'all are gonna do tonight, I will, I will go back with Kim, and we will identify possibly different ways to make up the $1.5 million difference. I am not gonna tell you that it's gonna come out of fund balance, that's not even my preference, but I'm not prepared to tell you tonight where $1.5 million is gonna go.
Because you'd have to go, you gotta go hunting.
Well, we, we gotta go, that's a good way to say it.
Yeah.
We go, we go hunting, and we have the resources to be able to go look, so...
See, and I think that that's the lever where I, I, you know, like, I want to make sure that we protect our AAA rating, and I don't know if, I, I don't know if our citizens understand how incredibly important that rating is to the, you know, our, our ability to, you know, to, to generate that kind of revenue for these big projects that we have. So issuing that, you know, that at a very, very low rate is an incredible lever that we have to pull. So I want to make sure that we protect that as much as possible, but at the same time, you know, to Don's point, you know, 1.1, 1.5 million dollars, what it is? It does feel like when we talk about, we do have, you know, fund balances to be, you know, like, enough funds to be able to try to cover that for appropriate uses, depending on, you know, the funds and stuff, so...
So let me, let me again be clear, we said this last time, last week. We got here, just so everybody understands, we got here because of the direction the council said, but we live in the, basically, the 3.499, right? So that's the budget that got proposed. Tonight, it's fine, if you want to say, we want to see what the no-new revenue rate is, let us go and do that work, get the information to you, to show you preserving as best we can, not dipping into fund balance, because that works counter to what we did tell.
It's basically same as the other weeds.
Yeah, no, and, and I absolutely, you know, but I, I do want to...
Yeah, it's, and again, it's fine, just understanding what the implications are.
Yeah, and I think that's the thing, is the, the unknown of what the implications are, I think, is the biggest fear. But I mean, I'm not opposed to...
If we pull, let's just say this, in your question, continuing that conversation, if you pull more money out of the crime control district to pay for police salaries, just using that as an example, whatever, in the police department? That, that is a fine use, and that is a way to offset a potential $1.5 million. And for the rating agencies, I'm gonna say they're not gonna see it, but they're not gonna, it's not gonna show itself that way.
Gotcha.
Right? And so that's what I mean by, what's our story? We get to tell our story, and this is what we did, based on council's, you know, direction.
Well, what I, I would say, I'm in favor of moving forward, as long as we can tell the story that we're not jeopardizing our AAA credit.
Well, that's where, that's where we go back and work tomorrow to start making those money, those numbers work.
Brianna?
Kevin, I, I hear you and Mark, and so I want to make sure that I'm also, you know, clear on, like, asking for you guys to deal with the weeds, that is not our expertise and forte, right? Like, we look to you guys to go and bring us back numbers for us to look at, and then we've got to make the best decision for the community. One of the things I've always appreciated about everyone around this table, and those before us, is that they've always looked to do what makes this community fiscally sound, and we've been fiscally responsible. And I agree, my, my concern is a Band-Aid today could be a major issue later, that we're not going to be able to undo. And, you know, and I think this gives us the opportunity, while you guys work on the numbers, this also gives the rest of us an opportunity to think through and understand, what does this do for our AAA rating? What does it do for other pieces of this puzzle? Because, you know, we don't want to jeopardize our public safety, and we have staff and directors that have been amazing about not asking for any more than is absolutely needed to run the city well and as expected by our citizens. So I think this just... So I think this just buys us a little bit of time to think through our options, and then we can all decide what we think is best going forward, knowing that we collectively have to do what's best for our community. So all that to say is, I guess I just wanted to say, like, I, I hear you guys, and at the same time, for others, I want you to know that, like, for me, I can only speak for me, I'm open to considering and looking to see what our options might be.
Don, did you?
Well, just briefly, I would hope nobody would think that would ever wanna jeopardize our bond rating, 'cause that's, I hope I would even, I've been clear on where I stand on how important that is. I don't think, I don't, I'm not Moody's, I don't think it would impact, this move would impact the bond rating, but I'm not the one who just don't know that. So, um, I do think we have incredible flexibility, um, and I'm glad we're having this discussion tonight, because I think that it will make our January retreat much more productive when it comes time to give direction for the next budget year.
I'm gonna piggyback on that in just a second, but Jim?
Oh, thanks, Wes, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Work session.
Yeah, I, uh, obviously, I, I mean, our bond rating is one of the crown jewels of this community, um, and it's saved us millions of dollars in interest, so that's a result of years and years of hard work. And I think everyone around this table stands on the shoulders of all the folks that got us in that position. So I clearly wanna go on record that I do not wanna imperil our bond rating. Um, I don't personally believe that tagging, uh, the general fund for one and a half million dollars of excess sales tax that we, of which we have far more than that available, would imperil our bond rating. But I've only been wrong five or six times today so far, so maybe this would be the seventh, I don't know. Uh, if, however, there's an alternative, if there's another way that, that we could, you know, poke around and find that million five, particularly given the predominance of the increase in the budgeted amount representing police and fire, uh, retention salaries, basically, then I'm certainly in favor of any solution that staff might find. Um, that's just the one that I suggested, that it doesn't mean by any means that it's the only one.
Did you?
I just wanted to say thank you, Mike, for your willingness to go back and look at, looking for one point five million out of one hundred and twenty million. Thank you.
I will ask?
Thank you, Mayor, and it feels like I have to obligatively say that I'm all for making sure our triple A rating is preserved, but I have the greatest faith in our staff. If Mike and Kim are telling us they'll find us a way to, you know, find the money for one point five, I trust them, so I will leave it in their good hands, thank you, Mayor.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna wax philosophic a, a bit. Uh, I don't think either that the one point five million is gonna jeopardize our bond rating one bit. However, I do believe that going back on what we said we were gonna do, could. And I'm a big, big believer in saying what you're gonna do and then doing what you said you were gonna do. So the one point five million in terms of the bond, I see as a non-issue. However, I think it's significantly more critical that we publicly stated what we were gonna do. And that, so that is my, my, my thought on that one. When we get into the January review, when we get into our annual, uh, budget review in January, the discussion is gonna be about whether we wanna continue with our three point four nine nine, or we wanna go down to, let's call it a two point eight or two point nine percent increase. So basically, at that point, the cost of city services is gonna exceed that two point eight or two point nine percent rate. So you guys are gonna be asked, at that point, do we wanna start cutting city services? Because that's really what we're discussing here. I mean, we're not gonna do it this year, we probably won't do it next year, maybe not for two or three or four years, it could be five. But at some point, like Mike was explaining, and I think we were trying to say, this is gonna have long-term consequences. And at some point, it's gonna come into a discussion about, you know, are we actually gonna live on a, on a, on a declining budget? And I, that's a question that you guys are gonna be asked to, to debate in January. So just be thinking, have that one in the back of your mind over the next couple of weeks, while you're starting to think this one through. Because like I said, the decisions that we're making now have long-term impact and long-term consequences. And when you put it in terms of dollars and cents, that's really what we're talking about. Are you prepared to, to go tell your citizens that you're gonna start, you know, trimming down city services that we've gotten so used to having? So since I don't get to vote, I get to voice my opinion now, so thank you very much. All right, um, Mike, do you have enough to?
No, we have, yeah, we, we fully understand what your expectations are.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Appreciate the, the discussion, you know, and like, was it, can't remember, Don, were you talking about the January? We really do need to have a serious discussion, because that's where we set the, the, the long-term direction of this council. And that's really when this discussion needs to be had. All right, item four, Kim, did you have any other discussions regarding the final budget review?
I didn't.
All right, anybody have anything else before our twenty-four, twenty-five budget? Uh, seeing not, we'll move on to item number five, which is our citizens' appearance. We do have two people that had signed up to speak for the second appearance. I'm gonna forego the reading of all the stuff that I read the first time around, so Mr. Show, do you have something you would like to talk to us about?
I'm gonna withdraw my request, I don't want to digest it, so I'll appear in comment.
You and us both, so thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Brownell?
Thank you, Mayor. Council, thank you very much for your consideration of the, the tax bills for the, for the citizens. I really appreciate that and the work the staff done. As obvious to anybody that looks at the budget here, we don't have a revenue problem. We have a expenditure possible problem. And growing the budget to a point where you're not gonna be able to crawl it back, using these funds that could, probably won't jeopardize a triple A bond, I think is, um, you know, good creative accounting ways to do that. But to not do it at all, and to cut the budget back, and, and not spend the money at all, that way you don't have to continually grow the budget. Our tax bill is continually grown up, grown year over year over year, and we sure appreciate, um, I mean, obviously, not growing the tax bill this year is much appreciated, but how we do it, we can do it without growing the budget as well. And I wanna thank y'all for your consideration.
Thank you very much. Well, there being no further business before this council, we are adjourned at seven seventeen PM.